All right. Well, we've got a full house tonight. So why don't we go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the code for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Let's go ahead to the spotlight school. Our spotlight school this evening is JV Stevens.
Hi, everybody. My name's Amy Sutton. I'm the principal of JV Stevens. I'm here with my music teacher, Mrs. Mary Bowie, and one of the students, Mr. Corey Gilman. And we have 20 very excited students in front of you, grades K through three. Obviously, today's Veterans Day. So how could we not showcase the work we've been doing for our Veterans Day program? I'm sure many of you know that each of the eight schools prepare a program for our veterans and our community members. Mrs. Bowie starts working on these performances with our kiddos back in September. So it really is from the very beginning of the year, the kids work really, really hard. At JV, I'm very proud to say that they do a program with all of our grades. So it's a K-3 performance of over 400 students that get up in front of our community and they all sing together. And it really is just a beautiful moment and a pretty program. So I'm going to highlight them. They are here to show you some of the songs that they performed at our Veterans Day program. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Mary Bowie. Happy Veterans Day. Happy Veterans Day to anybody in the crowd who's a veteran.
Our first song is "Thankful For the USA."
We are thankful for the USA. We are thankful for the USA. We are thankful, thankful, why should we do it? Thankful for the U.S.A. We are thankful, as we be, for our land, our people, and our country. We are thankful, it is true, and we love our land like new. We are thankful, we know our who let them, my people, us find. We are thankful, we know and we love you, dear country.
I'd like to add at the end, these are students who are leaders in each of their classrooms. Each one comes from one of the classrooms. JV Stevens Elementary. Raise your hand if you're a kindergartner. Raise your hand if you're first grade. Raise your hand if you're second grade. Raise your hand if you're third grade. So they are our student leaders. So congratulations. Mrs. Sutton.
Thank you for allowing us to open up our board meeting. Hopefully, you enjoy our program. And guys, I'm so proud of you. That was awesome.
Programs today. Yes, as Mrs. Sutton mentioned, we actually had eight programs. We had two on Friday. JV Stevens was the first of our programs. Then we wrapped up this afternoon at the high school. I guess I would just tell you as a board, there are many things that our kids do that make me very proud. The things that I witnessed Friday as well as today really just made my heart swell. When you think about the high school, as we wrapped up today at 2 o'clock, we had veterans walking into the gymnasium. And our students gave them standing ovation for almost five minutes as they walked in. And just incredibly respectful. And we just have a very patriotic group of students. And it's a reflection of our community. So they make me very proud.
Speaking of things to be proud of, we've got our Lilly Scholar nominees.
We do. And we have Mrs. Vale, a face that we're very familiar with. Thank you for being here this evening, Mrs. Vale, to represent the Community Foundation of Hancock County.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Let me begin by offering my congratulations to the Greenfield Central High School Cougar Pride Marching Band on a well-earned state championship. So, well done. I am Ann Vale from the Community Foundation of Hancock County's Education Committee. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to recognize the two Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship finalists from Greenfield Central High School. The Community Foundation of Hancock County celebrates 32 years of service this year and is privileged to count the administration of the Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship as part of its rich heritage. Each year, the Community Foundation of Hancock County applies for the opportunity to recommend two graduating students to Lilly Endowment for a full four-year tuition scholarship award. Should they accept the application, CFHC implements and supervises the process for selection. Eligible applicants must be ranked in the top 15% of their graduating class and plan to pursue a bachelor's degree to be completed in four years at any accredited Indiana public or private college or university. Student applications are submitted online and reviewed blindly without name or contact information by third-party professional readers represented by experienced out-of-county community foundation personnel and education professionals. The third-party reviewers select eight finalists, two students from each Hancock County Public High School, who best meet the selection criteria. Community service is the primary qualification. Financial need is not a consideration for the Hancock County Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship. This year, because one of our scholarship finalists is the child of a CFHC board member, the eight finalists were interviewed by a third-party committee identified by the Community Foundation of Hancock County, but all of whom adhere to a strict conflict of interest policy and reside outside the county. This committee had the very difficult task of selecting two students from the talented pool of eight finalists and submitting their recommendation to the Lilly Endowment for approval. Pending approval, the awards will be announced in December. The Community Foundation of Hancock County would like to present tokens of our respect and admiration to the two Greenfield Central High School Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship finalists. So at this time, I would like to ask Peter Hummel and Kendall Schnecker to please come forward. Let you kind of come right over here. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Wallbaum to share with you why we're so proud of these two exceptional young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Vale. Forgive me for reading a part of this, but the list of accomplishments for these two young people is just too long. So I'd like to read through some of their biographical information to share with you properly all that they have accomplished in high school. So Peter Hummel is to my left. Peter plans to attend either Notre Dame, Butler, or Indiana Wesleyan for biochemistry with a pre-med track and a minor in public health with hopes of becoming an orthopedic surgeon. Peter has been a runner on our cross-country and track teams throughout high school and has participated in our marching band as well. He's very active in clubs like FCA, Interact Athletic Leadership Council, and several others. Some of Peter's primary service projects throughout high school include volunteering in the Hancock Regional Emergency Room, working with special needs students through peer tutoring and Boy Scouts where he attained the rank of Eagle Scout. Peter has maintained exceptional academic standing through his various activities. And his mission has been to get everyone involved at Greenfield Central, get them involved and active in something while they're a student so they feel like they have a role in our school. Peter hopes to return to Greenfield after his medical training, start a family, and help foster the booming community that he has grown to love. And he also wants to thank his parents, coaches, teachers, mentors, and friends that have assisted him to this point in his career. So congratulations, Peter. Kendall plans to attend St. Mary's College, Calvin University, or Butler University to study speech-language pathology with a focus in early childhood development. She hopes to one day be a speech-language pathologist at a preschool or elementary school. Kendall. She'll be in high demand. Kendall has been a member of the Greenfield Central Marching Band. That's the state champion Greenfield Central Marching Band. Throughout high school, has been the captain of her section during her junior and senior years. Kendall has also been a student leader of the Greenfield Central Indoor Percussion Ensemble, which has recently medaled at both state and national competitions. Some of Kendall's main volunteer work has been in the childcare program at Brandywine Community Church. Kendall is a member of Brandywine Community Church. She's a team leader in the preschool rooms on Sunday mornings. She volunteers in other areas for miscellaneous events at the church. Kendall has also volunteered at the Prism Project in Carmel, Indiana. The Prism Project is a summer program which gives students with disabilities the opportunity to learn about the performing arts and engaging in accessible ways. Through this program, Kendall discovered her passion for connecting with children, especially children who struggle to communicate with others. She wants to be able to help kids find their voice, both literally through her work as a speech-language pathologist and figuratively by encouraging and empowering the younger generations. Kendall would like to thank her community, especially her parents, for surrounding her and teaching her the importance of loving the people around you and the power that words have on the world. Kendall would also like to thank her teachers, directors, and mentors for pushing her to dream bigger than she thought was possible. So it's my pleasure to present these two outstanding young people to you all tonight. Thank you.
Did we have any comments from the public this evening?
We had no one requesting to speak. And no one signed up to see it.
Moving on then to routine matters, minutes of the regular meeting of October 21st, 2024, and the executive session of October 21st, 2024. And I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Moving on to claims.
Including your packet of the regular and payroll claims as well as our nearly complete construction claims. Happy to answer any questions you have about that. If there aren't any questions, I ask the board to approve it as presented.
Any questions for Mr. Day? Can I take a motion?
Make a motion to approve the claims docket as presented?
Second. All in favor? I. Any opposed? All right. Let's move on to older unfinished business, financial matters.
Yes, and your packet this month are the final November, or sorry, final October education and operations funds. Projections continue to track where we expect them to be. Happy to answer any questions about this report as we look forward to the end of the year. You know, kind of do the wrap-up and the transfers and kind of that year-end report in December and January. And we'll get you all caught up on where we ended.
Any questions for Mr. Day? The instructional program report.
Before we jump into what you have in front of you, you do have some hardware in front of you that two people have referenced already this evening. It was very exciting for our high school marching band team. When I say high school loosely, we have 15 plus.
Eighteen.
Eighteen eighth graders as well that were part of a really difficult marching band program that kept getting better and better as the year progressed. And they emerged as the winner for the third time in the last five years. It was truly exciting for those who were there. And this community really jumped on board behind it, just kind of a tribute to the work that Chris Wing, the other music directors, have done. They start that work early with our students, sixth, seventh grade, and it really is paying off. So I'm very proud of that. That's one of many things that we do well, but it's nice to see that type of recognition. So if you do see Mr. Wing, I encourage you to give him a pat on the back. I don't know if they have one more week ahead of them here as they will go down to Indianapolis for Bands of America. And then they'll get a short reprieve before their winter season. Moving on to what you have in front of you, you do have the Greenfield Central High School course proposals for a second reading. And should we carry it?
This should look very familiar. We brought this to you last month. I will say that in the week after the board meeting last month, we did receive word from IU Kokomo that there were two courses they believe we could offer, given our current staffing. So we did add those. I put those in italics for you there. One in social studies and one in art. Otherwise, that is the same list you saw last month. And we would ask approval to add these courses as presented.
I move that we add the courses as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens.
We only had one other item for you this month in the instructional report. And that is also a repeat of last month where we talked about the Amplify project, specifically the Hancock County Career Center. If you remember, Tim Jensen from the Veritas Group was here and really highlighted a lot of that process, a lot of the information that was in this packet here. In the end, what I have for you is really the culmination of work over the last four or five years and really the support of our county elected officials, council commissioners, redevelopment commission to build Amplify. What you're seeing in front of you today would really be just asking at the board, consider approving the Amplify Partner Use Contribution Intent that is a part of that packet, which simply recognizes the role that the Hancock County High School's school corporations in general will play as a part of Amplify. And obviously, almost 30,000 square feet that will be used for current technical education as well as some of the things that would happen with our partnership with Ivy Tech. So this is an intent form just to show of good faith that we would plan to be a partner in that. Happy to answer any questions that you have about the form. If you have no questions, I would recommend approval.
The last month when we talked, we said we might be the first. Are we still going to be the first or is another?
That is correct. I did meet with the other superintendents last Thursday. And they're planning to bring that to their boards in December.
Make a motion to approve the Amplify Partner Use Contribution Intent as presented. And I think as part of that, give permission to sign that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
That's all we have in the instructional report.
Thank you. Board policy recommendations, second reading?
This is a second reading. And you have five policies. None have changed. You'd have C-125, admission to the corporation, also known as legal settlement. C-275, test security provisions for statewide assessment. Policy 525, medical needs at school. D-250, the annual teacher appreciation grant that needs to be renewed. And then the last one, F-125, purchasing procedures and capital assets. No changes have been made from what I shared in last month. Of course, these recommendations came from our partners at Church. Church had on Antrim. If you have no questions, I would recommend approval.
You get a motion?
I move that we approve the board policies as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next on our list is construction project update.
This will probably be the last one you see regarding the auditorium project. And you've been seeing these for a couple of years now. The picture behind you was taken probably two weeks ago. In fact, you don't see the countertop that would be on those half-walls. Really, the only thing major that would be missing there, a little bit of touch-up paint. We still have a few punchless items that we'll address, but I want to make sure you are aware that we have an open house opportunity for the larger community on November 22nd. That'll be the evening of our basketball game with Pendleton Heights, I believe, a girls' game. We've opened that up to the community from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., so a little bit before the game or a little bit after the game. So if people want to walk through and just see what that space looks like, we welcome them to do that. We'll have some adults in there watching over that area and we'll be able to answer some questions. Our first large performance that we have planned will be December 7th. That will be our annual winter festival, which we have band, choir, orchestra. And our drama team will have a little bit of skit in there as well. We'll have a 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. opportunity. And we hope many people from our community will come see it in use. Obviously, board members, you are welcome to either those settings or both. Or if you would like a tour another time, Mr. Day or I would be happy to provide that for you. Or Mr. Wallbaum at this point. I think we're feeling pretty comfortable with it as well.
Behind the gentleman in the neon-colored shirt, is there going to be a gate or something there?
It's already been installed. The gate that goes into the pit, I guess. So behind that gentleman, no. That is a way to get onto the stage. If I may.
Yeah.
Walk up here.
I'm envisioning my three-year-old making a run for the stage. Slipping forward to that opportunity.
Right here, there is a door that goes to the pit. But around the corner here, no. That actually just leads onto the stage. Right now, that pit is open. We will have that filled. I believe it's.
Starting next Monday, they will deliver the pit filler. Or starting tomorrow, they deliver the orchestra show. Those are really the last two big installation-type things. All the countertop materials in on kind of those exposed walls, including the wall that the guy in the neon green leaning against. And we're tuning the lights. We're tuning the sound. I take it back, there's one other thing. We've got a small section of acoustical panels that go on the front of the balcony. I mean, we're really. Of course, came to show we could have a concert in there tonight.
So you're just going to need to wear running shoes.
At least the pit will be filled. So if he runs up there.
Keep around this side.
She's got a hard head. She'll be all right.
But happy to report that you think about the years that have gone into this project or are right on the cusp of being able to use it. The other piece that I put into the construction report, just kind of a reminder there, the property we had bought from the Frost family in 2018, December of 2018. It'll be six years in December. The board authorized us to work with Barton Covilma to do some planning schematically to see what we might utilize that space for. That's been a couple of years. We would like to formally ask for permission to start talking with some professionals, architects, and engineers that we could partner with to give us more concrete ideas of how to utilize that space. And of course, we would bring such contract to this board for approval. But we have obviously spoken with a number of experts and utilized some time here. But if we're going to finalize some plans or make them more concrete, we really need to do the right thing and have an agreement with somebody. As long as the board's okay with that, then it's one of those things where it's often misunderstood with professional services. You don't technically bid those. That is something we can select. You do that based on reputation or past experiences that you've had with certain architects and engineers. But before we move forward, the board would need to something.
I think we allow the administration to move forward with interviewing professionals for the development of the classroom pop theme.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All right. Well, we will plan to bring something back to you in either December or January. We'll begin working on that.
Moving on to the collective bargaining agreement ratification.
This is one I'm happy to bring to you. Obviously, we spoke about this in the October meeting. It was many weeks of work. I don't believe Russ is here this evening, though we did have a lot of collaborative meetings with the Classroom Teachers Association. And no one has asked to speak to that. I believe that last we heard from our Classroom Teachers Association, it was basically all in approval of that. So we have one last step that we would need, and that is for the board to ratify that so we can report that to the state.
Make a motion that we approve the 24-25 collective bargaining agreement as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The Greenfield Central Police Department.
So this is again something you have seen before. We brought this to you last month. This is our second reading of this resolution. We are asking you to pass that this evening. The next step, and that would be to post and hire a chief of police. And so we've already kind of started that work to be ready if things move as they should. So happy to answer any questions, but this is simply the second reading of the resolution.
Make a motion that we approve the Greenfield School Police Department as presented?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can move on now to our additional appropriation hearing.
Madam President, I have the proof of publication was published on October 30th in the newspaper telling the people we're having this hearing. We're going to sell these bonds. And we also have a statement from the county auditor that nobody filed remonstrance to these bonds. So we are ready to go forward with the additional appropriation hearing.
I would.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I need.
A motion. Yeah, I was going to ask for a motion to approve the and file the proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we are prepared to hear taxpayers desiring to be heard in respect to the matter of the additional appropriation to be made on account of the projects.
Anyone who wants to speak, you have three minutes. If not.
All right, seeing none. Mr. Day, did you want to introduce the Exhibit A resolution?
Yeah, so in your packet is Exhibit A, which is the additional appropriations resolution that allows us to spend the money that we are borrowing. Since we're borrowing, this is a geo-bond. It's going to go into our local coffers and be spent from our local controls. So we just need, we just need approval to spend this money.
Can I get a motion to adopt the Exhibit A resolutions?
Make a mo.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve Exhibit A as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Day, Exhibit B?
Exhibit B is the final bond resolution and that sets forth the final parameters on the bonds that we're going to sell. The amount that they're going to be, the interest rates that we are going to allow. The paying agent and all of the pieces that we need from a legal standpoint to ensure the investors that this has been approved properly by the school board.
If there are no questions, can I get a motion to adopt Exhibit B?
I move that we adopt Exhibit B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, I think I just need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I move that we adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going back into our regular meeting, new business, business information?
Yes, under Business Information and New Business, I'm going to have three items this evening. The first is a grant donation that the high school athletics department received. It is a donation of two soccer, or I guess four soccer goals? Four soccer goals with a value of $10,550 and it's from the Greenfield Area Soccer Club. I ask the board to approve these grants and donations as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the grant of the soccer goals as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the fuel budget program?
Yes, this will be the third year that we would be participating in this program. Just to give you a reminder of what's involved here, what we're really talking about is setting a ceiling on what we could pay per gallon for fuel next year. It is a hedging program that the state of Indiana runs through the Indiana Bond Bank. So it's a very above-board and regulated process. This is just a set of resolutions that they ask us to pass in order to enter into that agreement through them. Overall, we do pay a little bit to participate in the program, but we have typically found it to be net neutral or slightly positive to our books. And what it really does is protects us from big spikes in prices. Now we kind of know that worst-case scenario, we're going to pay, you know, no more than this. So I ask the board to approve the resolutions as presented.
I move that we approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I believe we have the facility for our early learning initiative?
Yeah, so added to your packet this evening was a purchase agreement for a property here in Greenfield. As we spoke at the last meeting, we have received a grant from the state of Indiana, thank you sir. To open up a kind of a pre-pre-K, a zero-to-three, you know, infants and toddlers type of program. And they're asking us to get that money spent here in the next year, which is a little quicker than they originally did. But the main issue we have right now is we do not have space inside our current buildings that is properly outfitted to do this. So we've done some scouting here in town. We went and visited a property here located centrally in the city. We have made an offer on behalf of the school corporation and what we're asking is that you give us permission to complete this purchase agreement. Particularly the items that we have counter-offered on in terms of inspections and some remediation or a price reduction. Mr. Strahl has worked diligently with the realtor on this offer and this purchase agreement. So between he and I, probably more he, we will be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
This is probably getting a little too far ahead, but as we get further into this and we think about funding this and is it going to be a more education fund and operations? Or that way maybe way, maybe I know it's out of the scope of this, but I'm just.
Sure. It would probably be a little bit of both. We would maintain the building out of the operational fund. We would staff the building out of the educational fund once the grant dollars.
It'll be similar to all our other buildings.
It would be very similar to other buildings. In fact, I had a brief conversation with Amanda Sauter, Food Services Director, about envisioning what a food program would look like there. It'll be much more unique than even what our preschool does. But she's doing some research on the programs available and what it's going to take to provide food there. So yeah, it's going to, it's going to be very, very similar to how we operate our programs.
And know with the grant of their work, anything different?
I think we would also continue to pursue other grants.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is a very good thing for our staff population, for the teachers and staff who work for us.
We recently surveyed our staff and know from concrete numbers, Sinny did that for us?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three staff members.
So that they would utilize it.
I move that we allow the administration to move forward with the purchase of the property for the early childhood program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on then to personnel matters, contract recommendations.
Under leave of absences, Brittany Daniels, Shannon Dick, Jody Haywood, Sarah Coles, Callie Knolf, Kaylee Knolf, Brittany Smith under certified recommendations. Annabelle Espy. Turn to the next page, continuing with Melinda Penner. Certified resignations, Valerie Richardson and Corey Shady. ECA recommendations, Zach Allen, Reeve Dietrich, Dakota Gurrell, Sam Jennings, Randy Reeves. And one on that last page, Jason White. Ask that the board recommend the names as presented, of course. Those need to see permission to hire as the rest of the year goes on. We're going to bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meetings. Happy to answer any questions about any of the names in there.
Make a motion, we approve the personnel report as presented, as well as give permission to hire as needed for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on, out-of-unit coaching recommendations, first reading.
Typically, as we wrap up a season, we do pull some information from our athletic directors. Get a little bit of a summary in there from both the high school and the junior high. You have a recommendation for those coaches that are out of the bargaining unit, which would be our head coaches at the high school. For cross-country, boys and girls, women's golf. Football, men's soccer, women's soccer, volleyball and director of bands. This is a first reading, so no action required this evening. Of course, we'll bring those back to you next month. In the meantime, happy to answer any questions that you would have.
Man, I think the.
It says men's golf in there. Is that a typo? Should be men's tennis, right?
Should be men's tennis.
Yeah. So that's not for approval. We'll change it for next month, but if you're as confused as I was, that would be one.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, it's hard to keep track of all the accomplishments. I mean, I know I'm still fairly new, but it just seems like every day there's something new or someone doing something. And then I know having not only that, our athletes, but our administration helping out at the state championships is a big thing for us. So a lot of the recommendations here, I'm not surprised at all by all the reports that I read and hear about.
You know, athletics are incredibly competitive. The amount of time that Jared, Lizbeth and Mark put into that, our coaches, it's thankless at times. But I'll tell you, our students are putting in a lot of time to compete at that high school level and, you know, they make us proud. It's not always in the wins and losses, though we've had a number of successes. The way that they carry themselves, the way that they're building those, the value of hard work, understanding that, it's well worth it. It's a big investment in our community. Our community continues to support. It's more appreciative of that.
Thank you. I think then we can move on to the administrative contracts.
You do have administrative contracts in front of you and as our normal cadence is, we typically wait to wrap up our teacher's contract. And we've had that in principle for a couple of months. We'd like to make sure that that's taken care of. So you do have some admin recommendations in front of you. Very proud of the team that we have. They work hard for our students and staff. And I want to make sure that we are, we're taking care of them. I think this is a recommendation that moves us, that keeps us in that conversation.
Make a motion that we approve the administrator contracts as presented, including the administrative addendum for the 24-25 school year.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, I ask that you update your motion to approve as amended. We do have that one.
Did it have a typo in there?
Typo in there that we corrected.
Yeah, recommend that we approve the amended administrator contracts as presented, as well as the administrative addendum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further from board, staff or community?
I think tomorrow night, there'll be a group of us going to the Indiana School Board Association. I know they just released their legislative priorities and I'm now downtown. So as our legislative liaison, not only for my day job, but also for this. I know January is going to be here quickly and a lot of changes between now and then. But I'd be to talk about what we find out tomorrow night or if anyone has any questions and certainly discuss or try to answer. But I know education's always at the forefront of the general session and we had a budget here. So it'll be interesting what we find out tomorrow night.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
All right, future business, important dates, the regular school board meeting will be on Monday, December 9th, 2024. Thanksgiving break, November 27th through 29th, 2024. And with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?